... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that all council members are present except for Councilman Escra and Councilman Fraylon. Open Meetings Act posted on the wall and is accessible to the members of the public. First item on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearings on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on July 1st, 2024, as on file in the City Clerk's office. Item F, approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $208,446.16. Item G, approval of write-off ambulance bad debts. Item H, approval of pay request number 21 in the amount of $161,755.13 to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm. Item I, approval of pay request number 1 in the amount of $52,673.79 to Top Coat Incorporated for the Armor Coating Various Locations 2024 project. Item J, resolution number 7339, entering into a hangar lease with John Cox LLC for the purpose of leasing Hangar C4 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Resolution K, or item K, resolution number 7340, executing the Fixed Base Aerial Applicators Agreement with Emrich Aerial Spraying LLC for the purpose of conducting aerial applicator or crop spraying services on the Beatrice Municipal Airport airfield. Item L, resolution number 7341, executing the Operator's Lease and Service Agreement with Emrich Aerial Spraying LLC for the purpose of conducting aeronautical services on the Beatrice Municipal Airfield. Item M, resolution number 7342, executing the Grant Agreement and any other documents necessary to evacuate the FFA Grant Award for Grant Number 3-31-009-023-2024. And N, resolution number 7343, regulating parking near the intersection of Fifth Street and Ella. Anyone like anything pulled off tonight?
And is in the room.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the Consent Agenda with the exception of item N, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes 6-0.
I move that item N, listed on the Consent Agenda, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
I don't have a problem with it, Mayor. I just didn't know why we were doing it. I looked at it, I looked at it, I didn't know if we're changing. I just didn't know what was going on.
Good question.
So if you've been to the intersection of Fifth and Ella, I'm trying to pull up a map here for everyone. This would be on the northeast corner of Fifth and Ella. For those of you who've tried to cross this intersection, particularly if you're going southbound, if you sit on Fifth Street looking south, you have a difficult time looking back to the east. And so there's the recommendation of the Traffic Committee that we remove these two parking stalls to allow some visibility around this intersection. We tried it temporarily, we've had some cones out there, seemed to work well, we got compliments back from people liking the intersection better that way. And so that's what we brought forward.
And you're not getting any blowback from the business owners on the block about taking away a couple of parking stalls?
Of course. I believe we've heard back from one individual who routinely parked there for his business. But Jay, I don't know if you've heard anything else?
No, he's found a different place to park, so I think...
We're good?
He's happy.
We're good, we're good. Thanks.
Okay, any discussion? Your vote, please. That passes 6-0. Okay, now go to public hearings and bids tonight. The first public hearing is for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification UU to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number 9.
Yes, this is a TIF project that we've been working on. This is out at 25th and Scott Street. If you look, what we're at is on the north side of Scott Street there. There's an open field that is zoned R4. What the proposal is, is to come in and build six sevenplexes and one sixplex in that location, which results in 48 housing units there. The proposal meets all of the zoning requirements that we have on our zoning books. It's been to planning and zoning. It did pass, it was 5 to 3, but it did proceed there. CRA has looked at it twice, it comes back to you guys, and assuming your approval tonight, we'll move forward to CRA again. And project is about $10 million project, $10.5 million project, and I believe TIF on this is around $1 million.
Tobias, do you anticipate any traffic flow problems or parking because of the concentration?
So what is proposed is that it's 26th Street on the north end, it's 25th on the south end. I don't know if we decided what it was going to be called, but that road gets completed north and south. Again, your zoning requirements ask for, require one and a half parking stalls per living unit. It meets all those requirements. Are there times or locations that may have some parking issues? It's possible. I can't say that there won't be, but it would not be any different than probably any other residential area that we have.
Just curious.
You've got a lot of people in the audience, can you explain the CRA? Where we're at?
Sure.
Went here, went here, where it's going to?
Yeah, so anytime you have a TIF project, it requires five different meetings. So it starts at the Citizens Revise, excuse me, let's try this again, it starts at the Citizens, what is it, Citizens Review?
Really? Redevelopment?
Redevelopment Authority. So it starts there.
Redevelopment Authority.
They look at it the first time, they pass it on to Planning and Zoning, they then look at it for, basically make sure it meets all the zoning requirements, then it goes back to CRA to be looked at for a cost benefit analysis. After they look at it a second time, it comes back to your body here, and assuming you approve it, it'll go back to CRA for final approval of the redevelopment agreement. Right now, we're at the City Council meeting, so we're in step four of five in that process. Edgar?
Are all the requirements, they've met every requirement that they have to meet to do what they're asking us to do, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I got an email, and they were concerned about fencing, parking, and trees. Can we touch on any of that?
Sure. So parking, again, it meets all the parking requirements.
So we have any requirements that they have to have off-street parking?
Yes. So again, the way they're zoned, off-street parking is requirement one and a half stalls per housing unit or living unit. That's the requirement.
That's probably not enough, but yeah.
But they do meet all those. I think you have a picture in your packets there that kind of show it, they all have a garage, and then obviously have some driveway behind that garage, which is where you start to have the parking spots, the locations there. Trees, we have no requirement for a number of trees you have to put in our development. So if you see there on the left-hand side, on the west-hand side, there are the line of trees, they did clear out some of those because they were on to make sure they had the proper setbacks, but there's no requirement for a number of trees there. Fencing, again, there's no requirements that says it has to be fencing. Technically, since the northern part of that lot, of that development is general commercial, general commercial will be required to have some buffer zone before it gets to the residential. The buffer, or the general commercial was there first, well, then we could make them go back in and put their buffers in. We can have that discussion, but the R4 would not be required to put any type of fencing up.
So nothing to the south?
No.
Do they ask them for any money at all, T, other than TIF?
Nope.
Yep. So to alleviate some of the neighborhood concerns, is there an opportunity for us to ask them to do any of this? Ask them to add some landscaping that would be a buffer, or ask them to add some fencing that would be a buffer? I haven't had any conversations with these people, but I'm assuming that you all have.
So I mean, as far as the buffer goes, they meet all the requirements. I don't know, we can ask them to have any additional setbacks? If you do, their project becomes uneconomical?
Yeah, I'm not asking for any additional setbacks. And I looked at the map and see how it sits on the property, and I get it, and they complete. What I'm asking is that, you know, we've done a pretty good job along Court Street and the places of planting grass and trying to reforest. I want you to plant four trees for everyone. You and I've had that conversation, but I'm just asking if we can ask them to plant some trees or something to buffer it. I looked at the property from all the angles there, and you know, I guess, and I don't live there, but it looks to me like the commercial properties are coming that way. I think I would rather have houses than, or even apartments, than the big metal buildings that seem to be working their way from Court Street to Scott. So I think this is, you know, personally, it would be less traffic with the commercial thing, maybe, but this is going to be a better deal, and we're short of housing. So I'm just asking if we can ask them.
We can have that conversation and see what they're willing to do?
Maybe we should see what they think.
Yeah.
Before we start changing things.
Bill Trump here, yeah.
I think if we can ask them to do that, but I wouldn't want to have developers going to develop a $10 million property come in and say, you know, goodbye.
Yeah, they walk...
They're hard to come by to get anybody to develop in Beatrice, so I'm kind of, I understand what the neighbors think, and as in any other development, when we built Flowing Springs, where I'm going to be moving, people took him at his word, and he made it nice. So it makes it hard for me to want to ask them to do that. We didn't ask anybody else to go above and beyond, so I hope you understand where I'm kind of coming from. I think it'll be a nice development, so.
Anybody else from up here? Okay, from the public. As you approach, state your name and your address, please.
I'm Jane Neider. I live at 398 South 25th, and I think most of you got an email from me. I couldn't send you one, Rich, because I didn't have your email, and I tried calling, so...
My wife handles the email stuff, so...
Okay. So anyway, I'm here in opposition to the proposed UU plan of redevelopment, and I think most of you would be too if this plan was going up a half a block from your front door. And I just don't think putting this development right next to Flowing Springs area is a good fit. And it seems to me that the area under consideration is really not large enough to accommodate 100 to 150 people more, and probably 100 vehicles. I would think most of these units would have two people. I've been told that it's going to happen because the proposed plan is in compliance with RR4. And I've learned a lot about how things work, and now I understand that this was pretty much a done deal when the area was rezoned. When this area was rezoned to RR4, or R4, whatever it is, four years ago, the public, after having signs up that there was going to be a zoning meeting, the public was told, and the Zoning and Planning Committee thought they were acting on a proposed plan that was described as high-end duplexes compatible with Flowing Springs with a cul-de-sac. And that's what people thought was going to happen there up until about two weeks ago. Four weeks ago, well, actually, two weeks ago, when the zoning committee was told of this plan, they expressed displeasure with this new plan. And indeed, at the first meeting, they couldn't even get a motion to forward this plan. A special meeting was then called because they had to act and had to approve it because it does comply with the zoning. But even then, three members voted no. They felt that strongly that when they rezoned this, they rezoned it with the idea that it was going to be duplexes, not seven buildings with 48 residents. At the development meeting four days later, they said they had no choice but to approve the plan because it meant zoning. Of course, there was no guarantee that the buildings would look like what you have in front of you. They're fairly attractive buildings. But the other day, I was in Helam, and they have some gray buildings with two entrances with eight units. They look like army barracks. Now, my understanding is that this guy isn't tied to that plan at all. I think it came up within the last week or so. So now I've been to three meetings where the members had no choice but to approve it. No time to inquire as to the developer or other options. I don't know if any of you know this developer or have seen any of his work, know anything about his credibility. The urgency is connected to the TIF funds, and there is no time to learn more about the developer. There's no time to consider other plans. It seems getting TIF funds is what is pushing this through in less than a month. I emailed or contacted all of you, I said that already, and I did get one response and was told that it would likely pass, although I do appreciate you addressing a couple of my concerns. So two weeks, four meetings, and I guess it was a done deal from the beginning.
Anyone else?
I'm Hannah Kemper, 707 South 25th Street. And I just want to say I have a concern with the parking because most families have at least two cars, and if they don't have enough parking there for all of them, if you look there, where are they going to end up parking? I see problems because South 25th Street, right across from them, where you go into the area that we live in, that is a private street. But I have seen issues like this before in cities like Omaha and Lincoln where I've lived, where they start parking on the private streets. And I think that there's not enough parking, so I think that will become an issue, and I think that needs to be carefully considered. There should be additional parking so they don't have to park on the streets, or we end up with them parking on the private streets and clogging up the entrance to our retirement community. And that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Hibbert, 910 South Covered Bridge Road. I guess I have no problem with the development. What I have a problem with, they will overflow on the Scott Street, and when school starts, the first person that's going to hit one of them parked on the street will be a high schooler. I just guarantee it because, yeah, it's a wide enough road, but you're going to have them parking on both sides. And there is a daycare on Scott Street. One of the employees used to park right in front of it, and I know there are people that own it, I talked to them, just the fact that there, there's parking, I says, but I can tell you when those kids get out of school, there's, doesn't matter if it's parked there or not. So now you have the high school up there, and you're going to be throwing the elementary up there. Scott Street traffic is going to double because key parking be taken at. So I don't worry about the parking on the development, I worry about the parking on Scott Street and kind of overflowing from their parking lot. So my suggestion, which probably isn't feasible, is there should be no parking on Scott Street because that's going to be a major thoroughfare once the elementary gets put in. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do believe that's something that Traffic Committee will certainly take a look at. Anyone else?
Margaret Hayth, 104 West Granville. My biggest concern with this is you have no guarantees that this gentleman is going to do what he says he's going to do. He has already, I don't remember whether it was him or whoever had it before, but like Jane was addressing, they were going to put in the high-end townhomes, and it got rezoned for R4, and now they're going to put in 48 units. But it's R4. They can build as high as 55 feet, they can build something like where Storecraft used to be, they can come in and build a unit like that if they want to. And it's all going to be legit because it's all going to be within the R4. It'll meet the planning and zoning. Now, what I also want to know, planning and zoning passed it barely, but my understanding of planning and zoning, they are supposed to just be more of a recommendation. You're the final word on this, I do believe. So just because they pass it, does that mean that this council has to pass this?
No. Their planning and zoning is a recommendation.
Thank you. But does this council have to pass this just because planning and zoning recommended that it be done? Don't you have the ability to vote it down if you want to?
The council members can vote however they feel they would like to vote.
All right. Thank you.
Margaret, before you go, let me, so I served on plan, excuse me, a little, I served on planning and zoning before I served on City Council. And kind of a long time ago, Bob Sargent was the mayor, and he appointed me to City Council, so kind of pushing the timeframe, but when he appointed me to that, look, Terry there, but when he appointed me to that, he explained to me that this isn't appointed board, and you're not elected officials, so we expect you to make very difficult decisions that the public may not agree with. And so you need to do what's best for the community, both fiscally and all of that. Because he said, when it gets to be an elected official, when you get here, they can be swayed by public opinion or public pressure because they're afraid that, oh, you might not vote for me. So I always took Bob's word to heart because I had a lot of respect for the guy, and I've always tried to maintain that through here, through my seat here as well. It may not make you happy, but I'm going to vote for what I think's best for the community, both fiscally and everything else. And I don't know where that went on the planning and zoning, but I think that they probably went, oh, I don't want to make anybody mad. And I could sure feel their, you know, feel their pain, and I understand, I can put myself in their situation, and I don't want to do that. And I can too, for the people that live in the area. But I'm going to vote for this and for the reason because I think it's a betterment for the community.
So fiscally, how is this going to benefit the community?
We're putting in a $10.10 million project here, that's, all goes on the tax rolls, and we just had, Tobias and I had a conversation over the last few weeks about how much money each household puts back into the community every year that they live here. So it's a benefit.
So we're just looking at, it's because of the money, mostly?
No, that's not, no, no, no. No, that's, I'm not going to argue with you.
All right.
I'm just, you asked me one question, I answered that question. You want to ask me another question, that's fine, I'm not going to have an argument with you. You asked me how it improves it fiscally, and I answered that. Do you have something else?
I'll bring it up during the public forum.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Rich, a question, Margaret brought up a point. They bring us this townhouse that they're looking to build, and we approve that. They cannot come back and without going through the whole mess again to put one of those things like they did at Storecraft, correct?
So that would be considered a material change of the plan, and that would require to have additional hearings on it?
Yes.
If it's something minor, let's say that they went from having a sevenplexes to a sixplex, right? That might be considered minor, and that would not require additional hearing.
But I was just trying to address Margaret's fears that it could just automatically be put up there. They can't, they have to go through the process again.
I know that. They have to start all over again, just like they did with, it was going to be high-end duplexes, now it's going to be these things, go through the process, well, now we're going to put out...
Well, I, there's the argument about the money, yeah, that's nice. But I've lived here for 42 years, and the population here in Beatrice has been between 12,000 and 12,500. Never grown, it's stagnated, it's just been right there, and we've all been comfortable with it. But over the years, the City Council, the men and women that have said on this, we've put in new schools, we put in playgrounds, we put in one of the finest, one of the finest the business and industrial parks in the state, there's people jealous of that thing. We've been trying to pull, but every survey we've ever had always had one thing that was a tick to us, not enough housing. We sold, my mother-in-law passed away here a while back, we sold her house. You know how long it was on the market? Two days. We have people wanting housing, so we have to do something. When we did those apartments out there, they got filled. We built those houses up where the old hospital used to be. Boom, they sold, just boom. Because we needed housing. We still need housing. And Margaret, you know, I'm not the one that likes change. I'm an old crud-mudger, and I've sat here and been the only vote to vote against something on change. But we need these, 48 units, and if they're done right, and I share your leanness of it, but if they're done right, that's 48 units. Now, can young kids afford those? Probably not. But somebody that has a house that wants to upgrade to a 48 unit, that would open houses for these younger kids. I have a granddaughter right now that was approved for almost $200,000. She can't find a house in this town. And, you know, I've got kids and grandkids that are still living in this town, but they're moving away fast. Our young people are leaving because we don't have any housing for them. So we have to do something. And I want you to understand, I'm going to vote for this, and that's my reasoning behind it.
Quick question, the drawing that I just seen here on that, I mean, is that something that we can keep them, I mean, when they propose that, the way it actually is going to look, you know, with the, so somebody brought up, you know, like Hickman, you know, and I've seen those units up there, and yes, they're not very good, nice-looking units. This drawing here was, this picture was pretty nice-looking units. I know I lived in a similar situation when I lived in Minnesota, and it was a really nice community. Parking, same way, we had a garage, so a car parked in the garage, we had a driveway, the other car parked in a driveway. So we had plenty of parking for the, you know, for the family. So I just, you know, was curious, you know, on the design of this.
Yes and no. Yes, you can because the amount of TIF that they get is based upon what the county assessor has looked at this project and come back with evaluation on. So if they change it, that number will change, which changes the amount of TIF they can get, right? So if they decide to, I don't want to downgrade the quality or the project, right, they'll get less TIF money, which negatively affects them, okay? But there's nothing in agreement that says that they have to build three blue houses and two gray ones, and it has to be two bedrooms. There's nothing in agreement that has those types of details in there, no.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the exterior look, you know, because those drawings, that drawing was very good. And, you know, you said your house sold like in two days?
Two days.
I just put my focuses on last week, it sold in three days for full price asking.
So you say one year.
Yeah, so I mean, people are looking for affordable housing, and it goes fast, there is not enough housing.
That was simply an artist's rendering, it was nothing that, those can change as we go, but no matter whether this is approved or disapproved, I don't believe it's the city's business to micromanage somebody. If you had a house being built, would you want the city coming in and telling you what is this, what's going to look like, or can you change it?
No, but it's the value of it, and, you know, the looks on it, the outside.
But we could apply that to a single-family residence if you really want to think about it, couldn't we? I mean, we can't micromanage...
A little bit of the single-family.
Well, we cannot micromanage people's construction projects.
You're getting in the weeds. Got Terry over here. Oops, Terry.
This is one of those issues that I'm sure you're telling the...
This is one of those issues that, I'm sure you're telling, that puts us all between a rock and a hard place because I've only been here a year and a half or so, but I've been involved with a whole bunch of city committees, and Rich is right. I mean, one of the things that's holding us down from growing is we do not enough housing, we do not have enough housing. I'm also on the Engage Board, and we hear it from developers all the time. Childcare and housing is two major problems we have in the community. I'm not crazy at all about some group going in front of planning and zoning or the city council and telling them they're going to do something, you know, like build nice duplexes and stuff. That was three years before my time or something, and then turn around and doing something entirely different. And I'm positive that the traffic committee will jump all over Scott Street. I can't imagine that. I think I concur completely with what the gentleman said. It's just a hard issue when we do this. The, when I asked about the developer, T, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm trying to remember now because we went over so many things that day. Isn't the developer that's building those units in southeast Lincoln along 77 Extended, is that the same guy? Did you tell me?
I'd have to look at his address for sure, I don't know, but he's in Lincoln area.
Yep.
And we've been working with him for two years on this project.
Yeah, yep.
You talked about the way that things look. What, what made me jump at first at this was, years ago, we put, and Ted will remember this, we put those Meriwether houses up. And we, you know, they were built up there in Roca, wasn't it, I believe? But we, you go around there now, they still look fairly nice. People have dressed them up their personal ways, but, but I, I, I just got one thing to add. We, we've got two choices here. We can either stay and stagnate, or we can try to grow. And I think these, these units will possibly help us grow.
Anything else? Mr. McLean, let's close the hearing.
Mike, I move the public hearing to be closed at 7:32 PM.
Your vote, please.
We need a second.
Second.
Got ahead of myself. Your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7344, adopting plan modification, UU, to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number nine. Mr. McLean.
I move that resolution number 7344 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any more discussion needed? Seeing none, your vote. And that passes 6-0. Moving on to resolution number 7345, executing the First Amendment to the Agreement dated November 6, 2023, between the city and Hoppy &amp; Son LLC, in order to change the date by which Hoppy must submit their application for historic tax credits to the state of Nebraska from July 1, 2024, to July 10, 2024.
I move the resolution number 7345 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we have the contract with Hoppy for the city to sell the Kensington property to Hoppy at an upcoming date here. We are working through all those different hurdles we need to jump over. But in that agreement, it said that Hoppy had to apply for the historic tax credits by July 1. They got submitted July 10. And so we've asked it to come back and amend the contract just to make sure that we dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. So what you see is an amendment to the initial contract to change the date by which they have to submit historic tax credit application from July 1 to July 10, which has now been submitted.
Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes 6-0. The next number of resolutions deal with us getting prepared with the, with Beatrice Public Schools building their new elementary and opening their new elementary. We then go back and look at the properties that are there to bring them back into the neighborhood standard status instead of a school zone status. So the first resolution, number 7346, de-designating Cedar Elementary School, Lincoln Elementary School, Paddock Elementary School, and Stoddard Elementary School and surrounding streets containing school zone signage as school zones.
I move the resolution number 7346 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Just as the name indicates, we're looking at all the different school sites, the current elementary schools. We're looking to de-designate those areas as school zones because they would no longer be school zones, which you'll see at a future meeting as they're coming back and designating the area around 33rd and Lincoln Street as a school zone as that project moves forward. But first, de-designate the current school sites.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. The next resolution is number 7347, removing crosswalks and associated signings prohibiting diagonal parking and adding and removing stop signs surrounding Stoddard Elementary School.
I move the resolution number 7347 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So again, we started here with Stoddard School, we broke them up by school, just so they're a little easier to consume as we go through those. But the first thing this resolution would do is remove the various crosswalks. You see on your map that we kind of encircled, but there's a number of them around, they go clear down to the highway, right? We'd remove all those as the, the school now is no longer, is used for school purposes. At 8th and Scott Street on the southwest corner, there's some diagonal parking that's in the right-of-way but off the street. We don't have any idea how that got approved. I mean, that's a long time ago, but remove that and have that officially, that parking go away there. We've advised Hoppy of that already, but we'll make sure that happens. The biggest change that we're proposing here is at 7th and Scott Street. Scott Street is the main road in that area. Today, we have Scott Street stop for east-west traffic. We're proposing you change that. Scott Street traffic would be able to flow through that intersection, but the north-south traffic, i.e. that on 7th Street, would now stop at that intersection. Traffic at Scott then would go from 6th, they have a stop sign at 8th, again at 12th, and then again at 19th. Would kind of be where Scott Street would have to stop for traffic moving forward. But that's what's proposed in this particular resolution before you.
Yeah, and reminding the council that 7th Street's a two-way street in front of this area.
Correct. Yep. Yep, that change was done, I don't know, five, six years ago now?
At least.
Yeah.
Discussion up here from the public. Okay, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Okay, the next one is resolution number 7348, removing crosswalks and associated signings, removing stop signs, and changing speed limits surrounding Cedar Elementary School.
I move the resolution number 7348 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So similar thing, this time we're out at Cedar School, or the preschool, depending on, on what you prefer to call it. So again, there are some different crosswalks out there that look to have removed, they're kind of circled on your map. But most importantly, we're looking at Mary and Penrod Street there. There's a stop sign there today, it was there to kind of help traffic flow in that area. We don't see a purpose to have those particular stop signs moving forwards. We propose removing those stop signs. And then the speed limit today on Mary and on Scott Street is 25. With the removal of the school, we have proposed that those be increased to 35 miles per hour. The rest of Scott Street already is 35 miles per hour, and Mary Street, it would fall within what is a typical for roads in that vicinity.
Discussion from the public. Come on up.
Dana Hido, 208 Sherman, you are in my neighborhood, so I have a question. Not about Scott, you're right, Scott Street is 35. Say that again about Mary Street.
So Mary Street, we're proposing it would go from 25 to data 35.
I, I really do have a problem with that. There's a lot of people in that area. I'm surprised you would think that that should be 35. Rich, do you agree with me?
One hundred percent. I was going to bring it up.
You were going to bring it up too, yeah. I honestly think 25 on, on Mary. Scott Street is 35, but I don't see that as a through street. You have Court Street, and then you have Scott Street. I don't see why Mary would have to be 35. I think in most neighborhoods, you wouldn't have it be 35. That's just my opinion.
On top of that, you've got that, I don't know what they're called now, but it used to be the Koenig Apartments there. Those driveways, they back out onto Mary Street.
I, there's just a lot, and they sit very close to the street, and you have a lot of kids right in there, and I see, even with the school gone, you have just a ton of kids that live in those apartments. I, I would think 25 would be better for that street. Thank you.
Is the speed limit question tied to this ordinance?
It is tied to it, so if you wish to, we did need a motion to amend to remove the increase in speed limit on Mary Street.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, hold on, let's get this down here. Removing speed limit increase on Mary Street, right? And that was Rich, and then Mike?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So that motion to amend then would be on the table. We discussed that one, we'll vote on that particular motion, then we'll go back to the resolution itself.
So we're going to vote on the amendment to lower the speed limit on Mary to 25 miles per hour?
Well, we're, we're voting to remove that from this ordinance, so it will stay at 25.
Okay, got it. All right. Your vote, please. That passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Now, we need to come back, is there any more discussion on the resolution? If not, gentlemen, your vote, please.
So you're voting on it as we discuss, minus Mary Street. Mary Street will stay at 25, just so we're all clear.
And that passes 6-0. All right. Resolution number 7349, removing crosswalks and associated signage and allowing for 24-hour parking surrounding Paddock Lane Elementary School.
I move the resolution number 7349 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So moving on to Paddock Lane, again, you have a number of, of crosswalks in the area. We propose removing those. And then the other noted change is on 14th Street, which is on the west side of Paddock Over time, we've tried to change the parking along there. You had it during certain loading zones, you had it during school hours, you removed it in certain areas. And we're proposing that you put it back to what most every other residential street is in the area, which is 24-hour parking on both the east and west side of 14th Street. And that would go from on-road to park.
Discussion from the public. If not, your vote, please. Resolution number 7350, removing crosswalks and associated signage, changing speed limits, and prohibiting parking surrounding Lincoln Elementary School.
I move the resolution number 7350 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So now we're at Lincoln School. Again, we have a number of crosswalks, they kind of go off into some of the neighborhoods. We're proposing eliminating all those except the ones at 19th and Lincoln. 19th and Lincoln stays, all those crosswalks stay. It's still two through major roads, so we're going to leave those particular crosswalks as they are today. They may not get the special paint moving forward, but they'll stay crosswalks. Speed limit on 19th Street, everything else is 35 on 19th except May to Lincoln. We're proposing you increase that from 25 to 35 to match the rest of that particular street. And then also on 19th Street on the east side of the road between May and Lincoln, so right in front of the school there. Again, we have some loading zones, some unloading zones, some different times you can park there. We're proposing you just remove parking on the east side of Lincoln Street from May to Lincoln. Excuse me, I said Lincoln. East side of 19th Street from May to Lincoln, you just remove parking on the east side. The school is what's there today, it'll be gone. As we develop, you'll see most of what we proposed, those would be backyards, and so it's a major road through the community, and we propose removing parking on the east side.
Any discussion needed from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes 6-0. Okay. Resolution number 7351, regulating traffic to allow right-hand turns at the intersection of 19th Street and Lincoln Street.
I move the resolution number 7351 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So at 19th and Lincoln, there has been a sign-up there, so no rights on red, right? During certain hours and during certain days of the week, and you almost had to get a Rubik's Cube to try to figure out when you could and can turn. Our proposal is now that the school is gone, to remove that signage, allow a right-hand turn on a red like the rest of the state of Nebraska and every other intersection that you have in the city of Beatrice.
Any discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. That passes 6-0.
Are you leaving the stoplight there?
That's next. We're building up to it.
That's, that's the next resolution. We decided to handle that particular one just as it. Resolution number 7352, regulating traffic at the intersection of 19th Street and Lincoln Street by removing the traffic signal and installing four stop signs at the intersection.
I move the resolution number 7352 be passed and adopted.
Second.
All right, so now we've been building up to get there, right? So we walked you through all the easy stuff, we left this last one for last for a reason. So in 2019, we hired Olson's to come in and do a study of 19th and Lincoln Street. Their traffic study came back and said that Lincoln Street, that intersection does not meet the criteria for signalization, and they recommended a four-way stop or a roundabout. We then moved forward to 2022, and we hired JEO this time, and they came back and said both existing traffic, traffic today, and traffic that's projected out in 2040 does not satisfy a signal warrants. So basically, they said there should be no stoplight at that intersection. They recommended a roundabout long-term and a four-way stop until then. So that's why we brought before you today, as we're going through all these, clean them up, this particular recommendation to remove the stoplight at 19th and Lincoln and go to a four-way stop.
We'll start with Ted.
Go ahead, Terry. I have no problem.
All right, Terry, go ahead.
I brought this up at our agenda meeting. I, I just, I'm not saying it's wrong, I just question whether or not this, we're going to gain by moving this from a stoplight where we've trained everybody for as long as I can remember to stop there, and we're going to have hundreds of cars go through there a couple of times a day, that a four-way stop is going to move that traffic better than a stoplight. I'm not sure as hell as not on an engineer, and I can see what, I don't know what, what's this, what was the word? Does not meet criteria for signalization actually is, because we, we're sure going to have a lot of traffic throw, going through there as compared to other parts in town where we have stoplights, but I'm just having a hard time envisioning having four stop signs there and that we're actually going to move hundreds of cars a couple of times a day, better with stop signs than we would traffic signals. And I'm trying to be ambiguous because I don't know whether to be in favor of that or not, because the experts are telling us that it's better to have stop signs, but it just doesn't seem right to me in my mind, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, so, I appreciate all of that. So I, I'm really torn here, because I hate that light. I, I, my wife and I, my, my family, we've lived out in that area the entire time. We've lived in Beatrice, up at 26th and Nella, and down here at 22nd and Grant where we live now. So nearly 40 years we've lived up there, and all my work has been past that, has been, and I've had to travel that intersection. And I think if you, you know, at odd times of the day and night, and I think if you put all the time together, I've set at that stoplight where it's set red and nothing coming in any way, I've probably sat there two or three months waiting for that light to turn green so I could travel through it.
Probably more.
Probably, you're probably right, probably more. I, and so I despise the light. I was contacted by some people in my neighborhood, and they told me, and I agree with them, that they're not convinced that people driving in Beatrice really know how to navigate a four-way stop sign. I used to drive for a living here, and I, I would agree with that at times. I'm just saying.
I wouldn't be quite that blunt, maybe, but maybe there's a lot of truths with that.
That was, that was their statement, and I couldn't just.
The difference between the last 40 years you live in there and a year from now is, we have a school out there where it's going to be a hell of a lot of cars go through there.
So I'm getting to that. So this is the deal, and I'm a traffic study guy. Every time that we've had a traffic study here and somebody says, well, this is what we should do, I agree with the experts, just like Terry said. When they told us to change 7th and 8th Street to 22nd and 16th. When they told us to change 7th and 8th Street to two-way traffic, I voted for that, I pushed for that. Not all of it went through, but I agreed with them. The downtown rerun, we agreed with that, traffic studies. But that being said, if this was, if we were having this discussion in November, after the elementary school was open and we actually saw what had happened, because I know JEO has planned for this, and they've done it in theory, but we haven't seen it in actuality, I would have a lot, I'd be a lot more comfortable about how I would vote on this. And so I wish we were doing it then. I'd like to see this traffic signal left up until we know what the real true impact's going to be. The other thing is, and lastly, and I'll go with this, is I think the fix for that intersection is a roundabout. And my concern is that we stick a four-way stop there, and we have the neighborhood or the people in the community say, you know what, that's good enough. And I think, I think I agree with JEO as part of their conversation to us, that they said that the roundabout is the fix. So all that being said, I'm going to vote against it. And hopefully we get to look at it again in a couple of months.
One of the concerns I have is, because I travel that, both those streets every day.
Yep.
And I have, you know, that light is so short, you know, and you get somebody turning in front of you, you might, and when the traffic's backed up, you could sit there through two to three lights getting there. And I have sat through two.
So you've sat there four minutes and 20 seconds, because it runs 10 minutes and...
But it seems like a lifetime. But I don't disagree about the, you know, the lights. I just think they should, if we're going to keep them, I think they should be a little bit longer, and maybe a little bit longer going down Lincoln Street and shorter on 19th Street, because you're going to end up, like you say, during certain times of the day, you're going to have more traffic on Lincoln Street. But you can imagine if somebody comes up, they got cars coming down, and then they want to turn and go south on 19th Street. It's going to take them a time to get through there. And same way the other way. You know, I totally agree with you, Ted, about the roundabout. I think that's the best fix, but we're not there, you know. But four-way stops, I agree. People just do not abide by them. You know, they get up there and they want to go. So, I mean, I'm sort of in favor of keeping the light there myself, but, you know, I'm torn with it also.
A couple of years ago, I had a reason I was going to Lincoln on a regular basis for some treatments, and I went to 56th, and I believe Yankee Hill Road was under construction. They had a four-way stop. Not one time, as opposed to Beatrice, did I ever get this salute that we get once in a while, if you know what I mean? Never once did anybody do that, and everybody was polite and waited their turn. So I don't know what's wrong with a four-way stop. If 56th and Yankee Hill can stand it, I think we can stand it.
I don't disagree.
I think the light should go. I think a four-way stop sign would work. It'd flow the traffic. I'm on, Tobias and I have been sitting on a Safe Streets for All Committee. We've went through a lot of traffic studies and accident reports, and when you put a light, you back traffic, and then it goes in groups, four-way will flow the traffic and keep intervals between cars, it'd be safer. I think it'll be a lot better deal having a four-way stop there.
I don't care either way, as long as it's not a roundabout. I hate those things. I just, I absolutely, there's my curmudgeon. I just, I went to Lincoln to the doctor today and had to go through eight of them just to get to the doctor.
Okay. Conversation from the public.
There you have it, 910 Covered Bridge Road. I work right across from the Y. There's a four-way stop on 19th and Scott. There's kids walking to the high school, and my concern isn't the traffic flow, it's the pedestrian flow. And you're going to have an elementary scooping up, starting up in that section. When you come to a four-way stop, what are you looking at? The person to your left, the person to your right? There's a child on the right, and you're looking to the left, here they go, my turn? I've seen it more than once, and I go to work at 7:00 in the morning, they're heading to school, they come to that four-way stop, they're going to the Y, and they're trying to get, they don't look for the pedestrians. The stoplight until you get to school opened up, and even though Rich doesn't like a roundabout, that would be a better solution. And with Dwayne's comment, both sides need to be longer. There's not time coming off of 136 to Lincoln, you know, if you're going speed limit, you should be able to flow through there. Well, it doesn't, you're just, but if you put a four-way and you open a school up, you're going to have children walking through there. It's going to be early in the morning, I'm late for work, it's my turn, some little child will get hit because they're going to be shorter than that car coming across. It's a long ways from now, maybe parents all driving nowadays, but till you have the resolution for pedestrian traffic, a four-way stop is not a good situation with little kids.
Thank you.
So I'm Jeff Collessen, 526 North 33rd. I'm torn. If you put a roundabout in, what's the pedestrian traffic for a roundabout? How do kids get around a roundabout or through a roundabout walking?
So if you look at a roundabout, they actually consider it to be safer for pedestrians because there is an, I'm going to have the wrong term here, but basically there's a middle spot that they can land at the safe spot, right? So you cross one lane of traffic, there's a safety island, they can cross the next lane of traffic, is the way they'd be designed.
Okay. I drive through that intersection several times a day, 19th and Lincoln. If you, if we come out of church going to go eat, you can get stuck on east of 19th on Lincoln Street for two or three rotations because somebody wants to turn left on 19th Street. So that's going to be hard for you guys to figure out. I'm in favor of the four-way stop sign. We'll have a good test for it with the elementary school opening up next month, so I would say give it a try. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion needed?
Bob, if I can answer a couple of questions. One thing that was up here was what's a warrant, right? Always here, it's not warranted. Well, the MUTCD, so if you're not familiar, that's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, right? So this is the federal government puts out this document on the way you should look at control devices. And it says that traffic signals should not be considered for installation unless one or more of the following warrants are met. It's the term that they use. So they talk about eight-hour vehicle volume, so you start looking at how much traffic flows through in an average day. We don't have enough traffic, we don't meet that number. Then it says warrant number two, they look at how much traffic flows through in a four-hour, and they're talking about major and minor roads. Again, we don't meet that one. The next one is about peak hour vehicular volume. So this one talks about if you have a major road and a minor road can't get across because there's too much traffic on the main road, then you look at a light. We don't have that one. Pedestrian volume, it talks about 100 or more per hour for each of any four hours, or 190 or more during any one hour. So, man, that's a lot of people walking through an intersection before they say a light is warranted. School crossings, coordinated signal systems, so if you have multiple cars kind of going through an area. Number seven talks about crash experience, number eight is roadway network, and then number nine is intersection near a grade crossing. And so that's when they say it doesn't meet any warrants, those are what the engineers are looking at in the federal government's document on devices.
Gentlemen, it's time to make a decision. Your vote, please. And that passes four to two.
Well, you need five. You have the right to vote if you so desire.
Okay.
You don't have to.
Which, no, I know. But I am going to go ahead and vote yes. My belief of the traffic people know more than I know, so.
All right. So we got Fairbanks and Doyle voting no.
That was a long enough discussion, I lost my place. Okay. Now we're moving on to ordinances. We have an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to MEI Homes LLC. Mr. McLean?
I move that said ordinance be given number 24, just 24, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, so your vote, please. And that passed.
Terry? Are you voting on this one?
Sorry.
That's all right.
All right. 6-0. So ordinance number 24-24 by number only the first time, 24-24 by number only the second time, 24-24 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-24 be passed and approved.
Second.
So the proposal before you deny it is with MEI, I think it's MEI Homes, if I'm not mistaken, they are proposing to buy the lot at 430 North 5th Street. This is the one that's right by the post office alley, was once known as Lou's Garden. We acquired this lot about two years ago for $1,000. The proposal that he has made to us is he would buy it for $1,500 today. He would build a 1,040 square foot house on it by August 1st of 2025. If he fails to meet that date, he owes us an additional $3,500. So that's the proposal. Now, at the same time, I want to make sure that we're completely clear, we did have another individual who's interested in the lot. We've been communicating back and forth by email quite a bit today especially, so they have indicated a willingness to also purchase that lot. Both of these people came to me within a couple of days of each other. I don't know if they want to come out and talk about what they would like to do with the lot or what they're proposing, but they have offered a number that's higher than what is being presented to you here, so.
Okay. Rose Peraza. We live in 440 North. We've been here for four months that we bought the house, and we would like to get a park because since we moved here, we've been taking care of that, mowing the land, and doing the best to, you know, make it look good. And we don't want our neighbors that take away our peace and quietness. We want to keep it clean. We had lots of idea what to do, but we don't know yet. So, we would like to.
Do you have any idea what you, a future plan for the areas? I know you just said you didn't know, but do you have any idea what you plan to do with it?
Well, we can make like our driveway, you know, to the back of the house on the side of the apartment, and many other things that we can.
You don't plan on building a house or anything like that? You just...
That has been talking, me and my husband, but nothing for sure yet. We would like to, we just need to check like the size of the land and everything to make sure we can fit a place there.
So you own the property to the north, then?
Yes. Yes. It's a duplex, and we rent in one of the sites, so we would like to have more area for, you know, the person to park and...
Tobias, are, is the people that made the other offer, are they in a time crunch?
I don't think he's in a time crunch. This individual, we sold him another lot in town, very similar terms.
Let's table it.
Yeah, I don't know that he's got a time crunch.
Let these guys work it out, see what we think is the best deal for the city, right?
That was what I was going to suggest. Go ahead, Terry.
Okay. Don't make a motion to table, though. Make a motion to postpone.
Yes, yeah.
Average rules are very difficult if you table something.
Right. So...
How much time would you like to have, do you think?
I would think by the next council meeting. We should be able to bring this back. I mean, it's two weeks.
I'll make a motion that we postpone this agenda item until the next council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Are you with what's going on here?
So what just happened was we not going to vote on this tonight. You're going to have an opportunity to talk to Tobias and the rest of the city. We're going to give you two weeks.
Nope. You've got to vote on that first before you can promise that we're not voting on it tonight.
If it passes, you're going to have two weeks to talk to Tobias about your future plans and what your offer is and that type of thing. And in two weeks' time, in our next council meeting, we'll bring it back for a final vote.
And the next one will be August 5th?
5th of August.
And I made the motion, I would have been happy to.
Got a motion.
Sorry.
Sometimes. You need to hold on.
So yes, the motion on the floor now is a motion to postpone until the next council meeting. That'd be the motion.
Second.
Oh, we have a second already. We have a motion by Doyle, a second by McLean, so we've got that taken care of.
Okay.
That's what's on the table now, to be discussed.
All right.
Should we vote on that one?
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Okay. So we won't do the resolution?
Yeah, there's no reason to do the resolution. The next resolution was entered in the contract for the item we just postponed, so it doesn't make sense to do one without the other, so we'll just not take any action on that one. Get you home a little bit sooner.
All right. Number six, public forum. Purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the...
Margaret Hayes, 104 West Granville. So I told Mr. Fairbanks I would be back for the public forum. So Beatrice needs to grow. Mr. Kerr has referred to it stagnant, and that's true. I guess we haven't had growth for quite some time now. But what I would like to see for a future item from this, whether it's the city administrator, the mayor, the council, you want it to grow, but what's your vision? What is your vision for this city? What's your master plan? I know we're already talking, you're going to have about 108 units coming up between the two great schools and these 48 units now that are going to go in on Scott Street. So there's 108, so probably at minimum, that's one person in each one, so you're looking at 108. But I mean, I would like to know, do you want it to double? Are we talking 25,000? Are you talking 50,000? Do you have a master plan? That's what I would like to see addressed at one of these future meetings, just to know, what is your vision for Beatrice? I keep hearing it's got to grow. I'm not saying I don't agree with that, but I just would like to know, what's your vision for this city? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Collessen, 526 North 33rd. I have a request. There seems to be a little bit of disconnect between the contractor working on the streets and communications with the landowners out on 33rd and Lincoln. I found out this morning that I no longer had access to my driveway and through the contractor, which was fine, but as of Monday night at 8:00, I don't know where to put my trash can on Thursday, because there's no street in front of me anymore. And in August, I'm having a knee or an ankle replacement, and I'm not going to be able to drag it 100 feet north or 200 feet south to my neighbor. So I guess, just like, we're just a small community out there, there's like four houses, but right now there's a lot of change going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We will move into discussion reports. We have one tonight, the city administrator's monthly report.
Yeah, a couple of things to note in the monthly report. The RACE grant, just to kind of keep you updated with things. I have a welcome webinar this week with federal government, so we'll sit through that one and see what I learned there, and I'll let you know. On Demsters, I met with Merchant McIntyre today and NDEE, and we're putting together the team to start that grant application for that client project, so we're getting going on there. Kensington, another big project, their TIF has started and is rolling through that process as well. Should be here at the next council meeting as we continue to move forward there. And then, wanted to make an opportunity here to thank the Gage County Foundation for the funding for the new shelter in the dog park. So they came through with some funding, and it's worked out well, and I think it's done and completed. It looks nice.
Any questions for the city administrator?
Just a couple of short things. Let's see. Is the quarterly report from Engage next council meeting?
Yes.
Right? I would like us to consider having an executive session then, because there's things I'd like to be able to bring up relative to new industries and things that I'd like the councils to please consider that, okay? At the same time. And, let's see, and we've talked about it a couple of times, but someplace, this year's going by here, someplace we need to really sit down and make a decision about the 750 to 1.1 million. There's a number of good projects there, we just need to get it up here and get it voted on some point in time, so people know what the hell's going on there, I think.
Yep, that's definitely on our radar screen.
Okay. Okay. And last, and we had three people in there that were retired or are going to retire that have been with us a really long time, okay? And I haven't worked with the other two people, but I have worked with Norm McConnell many, many times relative to the pantry deal that we did downstairs. And I just wanted to publicly thank him for all the, because he met with me late at night and things that he didn't have to do, so this is probably the last chance I'm going to get to do that. So I really, speaking for the pantry, we really appreciated the time you put in on that, and I'd appreciate if you pass that on to him. Okay.
Okay. Next regular city council meeting will be August 5th at 7:00 PM, right here at the Beatrice Public Schools Administration Building Board Room. Mr. McLean?
I move the city council meeting be adjourned at 8:10 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please.